Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Bloods, Allegiant's, in a moment of silence.
For Allegiant's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Ruston.
Present.
Chairman Bonnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudas Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So now we're to Communications Proclamations and Presentations and at the beginning we have Mr. Kevin Klein from the Airport Commission. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Well, it's been a few months, I think it was January, since I was last here, so almost a little over a year since the last true update. So thank you for having me back tonight. Thank you Commissioner Ruston for all your efforts on the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission and your time. Thank you very much. So we'll get started. Very similar to presentations in the past that, you know, the main goals of the Airport Commission is kind of blessed upon us by the two counties that own the airport is three basic principles, the safe, secure, and self-sufficient operation of the airport. With safe and secure, we're inspected all the time by the FAA and the TSA, so we've been achieving those goals easily. Self-sufficient is why I think you asked me all to come back every year to make sure that my request is that there is no request for more money. So I assure you, there is no request for more money tonight, so. I know the joke gets old every year I come through. Looking at our capital budget, some of the things that have changed with the amount of passengers that are passing through the building, the amount of Airport Improvement Program money that is made up from the airline ticket tax has increased. So our formula share is 1.9 million. Over the years that we've seen that increase from around a million four to 1.9 here this year. So this is one of the reasons why you always hear the Airport Commission pushing to fly from nearby, because the more people that get on airplanes in Traverse City generates those dollars back for capital improvement projects. Those projects are mainly used for construction, runways and taxiways, light systems, capital equipment such as snowplow, fire trucks, et cetera. It cannot be used for the daily operation of the airport. Also, the passenger facility charge dollars are $4.50, and so you see those also on the tickets. This is one of the things that's in the highlight of a lot of the national news for airports and airport legislation. Airlines do not want to see that change, that $4.50, but the industry hasn't seen that number changed in over 25 years. So it hasn't gone up for inflation or constructionary cost changes. And so there's a lot of discussions in the industry level at Congress and different FAA bills and whether or not that should be increased over for inflation. So we're looking to see how that's going to change over time. But from the airport's point of view, that is one of the main reasons why when we constructed our main east-west runway, reconstructed that in 2017, that we're able to do such a project like that. Otherwise, those types of funds, looking for discretionary funds on the federal side, are hard to come by. And so that passenger facility charge paid for around 55% of the part of the project, and it was a $24 million project. So it's a very important number to the airport, and we'll see how that changes. It's also one that we watch from a concerning side of a passenger side, because additional tax dollars drives passengers away. So we want to make sure that there's a balance there, and so that's what the airport is fighting for. From airport finance side, the information here on the next slide that's changed is our annual budget's about $6.4 million, working cash fund of about $3.1 million. The main things that have changed our working cash fund over the last couple of years is we've done significant capital improvements to the terminal. We've completely replaced the carpet throughout the terminal building and all the public space areas, which was around a $600,000 project that, when you look at the terminal, we still call it the new terminal, but it's 15 years old. So we've seen about 10 million people go across that carpet, and so we did have to make some significant changes. The nice part about it is they still had the pattern, so we didn't have to have a lot of different committees on colors or anything like that. We were able to just go out and put in the same carpet, since it worked very well. So just, you know, no local taxpayer dollars are used to support the airport. The airport is supported basically on those that use the airport pay for the airport. So we're completely self-sufficient. Guess that didn't transfer through.
What's balanced, though?
Yes, it is definitely balanced. From that standpoint, typically the Airport Commission has over the last five years has put in the bank between $150,000 to about $350,000. So that's typically what we have put in the bank at the end of the year. And that's also a balancing act in that regard, because if we put too much money in the bank, the airlines then will come and say, "You're charging too much for rates and charges at the airport." But we also need to continue to build a cash reserve fund to make sure there's money there for a rainy day. And so it's always a balancing act. But when we look at our revenues, which would have been on the chart over on the left, typically our revenues, about 39%, come from rental income. This is the spaces in the airport. When you walk in and you look at and you see United Airlines and Delta Airlines, American and now Allegiant, they rent operational space at the airport. They have their offices, their operational areas where they store tugs, also some of the queuing areas for ticket counters. That's where a lot of that rental income comes from, are those that are within the building. I like to kind of compare it sometimes to a mall. When you look at a storefront, it's Target, JCPenney, same principle. They rent the space from the mall to operate their business. Parking lot is our next big source of revenue that comes from, and that's about 23% of our overall revenue. That produces about $1.2 million a year to our budget. It's very important because of not having a taxpayer base to pay that or no mileage on the airport. So that is one of our major funding sources. The next is rental car income, and that income is derived just basically also in the same form of rental income. However, we do operate with what we call Mags or Minimum Annual Guarantees, that the car rentals will guarantee the airport. Or they pay us a percentage of the revenue if they exceed that guarantee. So that's also very strong and been growing with the amount of passengers growing at the airport. Other sources of income.
So, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
What's the percentage, then, of the cars?
And that percentage is 19% of the income. And then the other areas are 9% of landing fee, aviation fuel is about 3%, and then other incomes such as concessionaires, advertising income is around 7%. So that generates our operating revenues. Our operating expenses really fall into a couple of different categories. Personnel cost is typically the largest expense at the airport at 41%. When compared to other airports our size, we're on the low end of those costs. Most airports our size are on their budgets and they're on the 60% to 65% range, so we're doing well. How we offset that is we use purchase services. We contract out our janitorial cleaning of the terminal, firefighting services, engineering services, and legal services. So we balance that out. So 41% is personnel cost, 28% is purchase services. And then occupancy costs, just our day-to-day maintenance of tenant areas, tenant spaces. And then 18% we call others, which is mainly related to the airfield expenses and meeting This is one that in 2017, Michigan Department of Aeronautics did a community benefits assessment on the annual economic impact the airport is to the state. And Cherry Capital Airport is ranked third in the state behind Detroit Metro and Grand Rapids at just shy of $1 billion. At $991,364,000 is our annual impact to the state of Michigan. That's prior to Costco being developed on the airport, and that's prior to a lot of the new air service development. So today, I can honestly say that we are over $1 billion of annual economic impact. The average visitor spending per person is $752, and that's number one in the state. And that does not include airfare. That's just what they spend when they're in our community. Passengers, 2011 to 2018. Back in 2011, our total passengers were 352,000. 2018, we ended the year at 500,416 passengers. And today for 2019, we're up 14.1% over 2018's passenger count. So we've been setting records since 2015. Prior to 2015, 2005 was our record, just shy of that 429,000. But since 2015, we've been setting a new record every year on passenger growth. And that has been really coming from the form of the current carriers that we had with American Airlines, Delta Airlines, and United, really began changing and adding a lot of summer destinations. From United, we saw over the last few years their daily Chicago, then they added Denver. They also added Newark, New Jersey. And then this past summer, their latest destination was Washington Dulles for Washington DC. American Airlines over the last several years, again, they have daily service to Chicago. They added Dallas a couple of years ago, which that route has done really well. They extended that route this year, past Labor Day to October 2nd, and that really did well. They also service New York, LaGuardia, and then this year they added as a new station, Charlotte, North Carolina. So that was a fantastic add, again boosting our numbers. And then Delta Airlines added really more seats to the market on their core routes. When we look at the Minneapolis route, that's been a route they've continually improved over the years during the summertime months. And this year, during the month of July, they used an Airbus 321 with 192 seats onboard the aircraft. Now, we're used to seeing the Airbus 320. The Airbus 321 is only six rows longer, so it's not much different in the aircraft impact size. However, it's 50 more passengers than what we've ever seen before on an aircraft, so that makes it the largest scheduled airplane to ever serve the airport. So we're excited about that, and that continues to grow. Delta continues to improve service to Atlanta and even more flights, also New York, LaGuardia, then on top of their daily flights to Detroit that we see here around. So a lot of big improvements. Also this year in March, a new airline started with us, Elite Airways, and they started serving on a weekly basis to Sarasota, Florida. Hold on, that's, don't spoil it on the notes. Elite Airways started serving us nonstop to Sarasota, Florida. And that was really developed here during the March timeframe. They're using the Small Communities Air Service Development Grant that the airport received to boost service to the south. And so they took advantage of that and started that service, and it's done, I would say, fairly well. However, what they're going to run into now is a little competition. And this is exactly what that grant was all about, is to generate competition. And so Elite started that service in March, and in May, the airport was contacted by Allegiant. And by the first part of June, we had an announcement to three cities in Florida, Orlando-Sanford, Tampa-St. Pete, and Fort Myers-Puntagorda. They did very well booking, and about six weeks, maybe eight weeks afterwards, we received another call from Allegiant saying, "We're going to announce Phoenix Mesa." So those are, Phoenix will be year-round, Orlando-Sanford and Tampa-St. Pete also year-round and Punta Gorda will be winter seasonal. Now, that's a change for me, to say something is winter seasonal. I'm so used to saying things are summer seasonal. And so that's been a great addition. This aircraft, our Airbus 320 aircraft that they are using, common airplanes to our airport, however, they use a high-density model. So these airplanes will have 186 seats on them. When I left the office this afternoon, the fares for Allegiant were advertising to the Florida markets beginning at $60 one-way, and to the Phoenix Mesa market was $79 one-way. So this is going to create a dynamic shift. A lot of aviation writers call them the Wildcats of the industry, and so we're very excited to see them come to our market, and we'll see what turbulence, pardon the pun, but they create to the pricing market with the other airlines that are here. So we're very excited for that. They'll be operating out of Gates Five and Six. Allegiant's model is to ground load. However, of course, during the winter months, they'll be using a jet bridge, and that will be out of Gate Two, that shared use with Delta Airlines. So we're excited to have them. It will present some challenges for the airport. Parking, automobile parking will be a challenge. So the airport has, Airport Commission had our last meeting, put forth a quick contract approval for Elmer's to expand and put in a, what we'll call it, a temporary lot, 130 spaces to be added quickly here this fall, and that's being worked on. We expect that to be completed by the 16th of October. That will be a quick Band-Aid. The Airport Commission wanted to build a full lot, however, when we went to go bid, there was really only one contractor that was available to bid because of the Reese Riley strike. So we chose to get something down first and then to go hopefully bid next spring, a full project, to complete and expand the parking lot. We also did, by doing that, we hope to make some painting adjustments in the current lot. Our lot spaces are 10 feet wide. The normal spaces in Traverse City are eight foot wide. We're still, we're not going to shrink it down to eight-foot wide spots. We're still going to leave nine, but that will add an additional 90 spots in our lot. So we'll add the 130 plus 90, and then we've made some additional changes where our employee parking is, and we've moved some employee parking over to where our fire station is. By doing that, we gained another 120 spots in our, we'll call it our overflow lot. So we're ready for Allegiant to come, and we're looking forward for those additional to come and park here at the airport. So that starts, the Florida flights all start on October 16th and 17th, and then the Phoenix flights start on November 13th. Other airport projects currently out for requests for proposals is for a sustainable energy project. It's a solar project partnering with Traverse City Light and Power. The additional non-aeronautical land that surrounds the Costco area, we're potentially looking at a 10-megawatt solar farm to be on the airport. These are typical areas that we look at that have to be clear of objects and obstructions, and so it's a great way to utilize that land. But also, it's a great way to offset one of our highest costs at the airport. The airport pays about $550,000 a year in energy costs, and the potential to have a 10-megawatt solar farm would really go a long way to offset our usage. Our usage is around, at peak is around 1.57 megawatts. So the ability to use a third-party power provider to sell that additional energy back to Traverse City Light and Power to earn that income to offset our power would be great. And this is a trend we're seeing at airports across the country. Minneapolis-St. Paul concluded one recently. They covered their parking deck, the top floor with a solar power. Chattanooga, Tallahassee, and many others, San Diego, we've seen that. And so we went through a study here at the beginning of the year to look at, would solar really work? And that study has indicated that it would be very effective, and so the opportunities are there for us to turn some income in those non-aeronautical areas and utilize that land, plus it would be a great green project for our community. The other project that's going on right now is the reviewing of the governance structure. That's, I was here in January about that to ask for some assistance to form a committee, and I want to thank our participants with Mr. Janik, Mr. Bonnick, and Ms. Ruston that has been participating. We started in April, and the main focus in the April meeting was really on the history, reviewing the current governance models, condition of the current agreement in the Michigan Aeronautics Acts that were associated with it. In May, the airport government, we reviewed the airport governance that we've seen at a lot of Michigan airports, also from a national governance that is nationally taking place. FAA, what's called the FAA Governance Playbook. We started taking input on our stakeholder values, airport tenant values. Really doing a deep dive of commissioners and authorities and advantages and disadvantages. That led us into More Stakeholder Values, Part Two of the Advantages and Disadvantages. Then we got into August, and we talked about what the transfer process would look like if that authority were to take place, some of the key documentation supporting the FAA requirements, and then what is the reporting process to Airport Commission and the two counties. September was an outline of what the report should look like and an information that it should include. And then we did a public invitation to comment. And we actually limited the room on that with the amount of people that came in to give comment, but it was a very positive day, looking forward what the airport means to the community and what it should look like going forward. So we're excited to receive that comment back on that day. The October meeting coming up will review final comments on the committee report and look for a resolution from the committee to the Airport Commission on what direction to go. Also established on our report in September was a website. It's at the TVCairport.com-publicnotices. At the bottom are all the presentations that the committee has reviewed, and then also there is a general mailbox if there's any comment that anybody would like to take a look at. So, any questions?
The high-density plane means small seats and narrow aisles.
Well, I've flown on their planes, and it's very comfortable, but it is different than flying on Delta Comfort or First Class Delta. It's a noticeable difference. They are an out-of-car airline, so you can buy seats ahead of time that do have more legroom, and that adds to your cost. You can buy baggage, you can buy boarding priority. So there is more cost to that if you want those things. But typically, most Allegiant are around, a minimum of 30% do not buy any of those amenities and just pay for the fare and go.
Can we share that, sir?
When you come back to us with the additional information, you know, I'm also expecting to see a complete financial report, both capital accounts and operating accounts. You know, where are you at right now? I know you're in good shape, but that's part of what I want to see. So I'm just letting you know.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That will be a part of the report, our financial audits, correct.
Do we see any other questions? So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And I always extend the invitation out to come and visit, so if you feel like you would like to come and visit, I'll be happy to take you on a tour of the facilities, so please feel free, just reach out. I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
So next is the White House Summit Report, and this is part of my report. Of course, we have the White House here. Niko and Matt got together and invited commissioners from three different states. It's really local officials, not so much commissioners. I say commissioners because most of the people were commissioners. So in several of the, President Trump's administration spoke on economic development, the opioid crisis, and the waters of the USA. And then, so then on Thursday morning, Niko held a briefing and an overview of the policy meeting for the officials from Michigan, Ohio, and Kentucky. So immediately after that, I took a self-guided tour of the White House in the East Wing, and which also included the Red Room, the Blue Room, East Hall, and the East Dining Room. So this was at the West Wing. This was taken during the lunchtime, or actually, I think it was previous. Well, I say lunchtime because it was noon and the seminar started at 1:00. So during the lunch, they actually took this picture, and I was out to lunch, so. So I'm not in that picture, sorry. But this one was the one at, early in the morning, at 8:00, they had a breakfast for us, and then that was the briefing for the three states. And of course, you can see I was still asleep there, but obviously caught me with my eyes closed. But anyway, so that was at the briefing getting ready, and then this is right after this when we went to the White House. You know, we took an Uber drive. There were four of us well-packed into that car over to the White House from there. But, and I think it was Kevin from there said that he was happy that we had worked with deodorant, you know, because it was 95 degrees.
Wow.
Yeah, there. So this is the East Room, and I like this picture because that's the picture of Washington. It's his portrait, and it's the only thing that's been in the White House since the beginning of the White House. And that was actually saved during the War of 1812 by Dolly Madison. She had that removed from the White House before the British burned it, so that's the only thing that's original that was left over. So I thought that, and that room actually is the East Wing, and that's where they have many ceremonies where they'll give the Congressional Medal of Honor or any other dignitaries. They're usually received in this East Hall, I think it's called, East Room Hall. So this is after going through the tour, I was out in front of the White House, and I got Tiana to take a picture of me there. And there were actually lots of other members from Michigan there at that time, too. So then this is where, after lunch, we went to the seminars, and this was my favorite speaker. His name is Lawrence Kudlow. He actually had his own financial TV show, but he was very apolitical. He just talked about economics. He talked about what his philosophy is, how he advises the president, and, you know, and just very, very practical, sensible person. I just really enjoyed him talking about how we need to keep the economy going. He talked about China and what they've done, you know, and the problems that they've created, as well as, he pushed very hard for the new, I think he called it the MC, which is Mexico-Canada, I don't know, I can't remember the initials.
U.S. MCA.
And so he said that really will bring jobs back to the U.S. and help that. So he, a lot of the policies that are being instituted sound like he's helped put them in place. Then again, of course, this is Betsy DeVos. She talked about the schools, she talked about education and trying to have more people understand what technical schools would be. She said there, she... She said they, she needs, she's trying to set up a comparison from if you go to college or if you go to a technical school, depending on what you want to major in college, what you want to do, what you could do in a technical school, what kind of income you get, and what kind of debt you would have after those two. So, she's trying to institute that. She also talked about broadband in the rural areas. She said she goes to schools, people are receiving lots of information online, but yet they go home and they can't, they can't get online because they live in a rural area and there's no internet. So, she's, she's, she's advocating for something like Cherry Land Co-op or, you know, electrical, what do they call it? The electrification of the U.S. as a broadband U.S. That, that she's advocating for it. And, and then, there was a, there was a community revitalization panel that they had, which were four of the staff from the different things, one from youth, from USDA, one from DHS, different pa, and they were four different secretaries. And they also talked about the broadband and how important that is for rural areas. And they're talking about having grants come out for it. It says if, if you have a plan and you, you need it, which, and they will, and you can show that, then they're going to be more likely to pass those grants on. So, because they want, they called it shovel-ready again, you know, that they're, if you're shovel-ready for broadband, then you can get these grants. So, I think we need to be aware of that and look for that. And that was the one thing I really took away, because it, all three, they, they have these opportunity zones that they, they're promoting, but it all comes down to, if you're ready and the grants come out, you'll be the first ones to get it. So, I, I thought that was probably the biggest thing I took away from this, other than, I was amazed at how well-organized they were. I mean, when they had, when, when Larry Kudlow was done, the, he walked out, a staff member walked in, introduced the next person, they walked out. I mean, we sat from 1:00 to 4:00 before anybody even said, "You guys want to stretch?" And everybody goes, "Yes." I mean, three solid hours, just constant someone talking about a different policy. So, I mean, I just, I felt really, the, the one thing that they, they also did is they made sure almost every one of the speakers were from either Kentucky, Ohio, or Michigan. And of course, the, 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 the person who runs the EPA, I think, is Andrew Wheeler. When he came out, he was, he had graduated from Ohio State. And so, he talked about some of the different places where they're going in and trying to clean up. And he just happened to mention that they have just condemned the big house in Michigan because they found contaminants underneath it, and they believe it's going to be torn down, and they're going to put affordable housing there. So, that was a joke. That was a joke.
No kidding.
But I learned a new cheer, which, you know, that was, he says, and I have to apologize to Kentucky and Michigan here, but he says, "I just have to do this." And he goes, "O-H," and the crowd goes, "I-O," you know? And I had never heard that before, and I thought about it, first of all, "Oh, Ohio." So, that, that was the cheer that I had not heard before.
There's a couple other versions of that cheer.
Yeah.
Not for tonight.
Right. So, so anyway, it was just, I did, we did watch the helicopter come in and go out, and everybody got excited. Tried to get a picture of it, but it looks like I was in a cloud because I was shooting through a window, you know? But, but, you know, so we didn't really get to see the president or, you know, or Melania. But we were there, and it was fun, and we saw, you know, many secretaries, many people from the White House, and they are busy, I can tell you that. So, I don't know, did, is there anything else? Any questions, I guess? No, good, so.
It looked pretty nice in that east room.
Yeah, it was, it was very, you know, I, I just, and actually, the, the security guards who are there are very, very helpful. When it's full of people, they won't talk to you. But it's like, I was there almost by myself, the crowd had gone through, and then he talked to me. He's the one that told me about the, the painting and different things that were in there. There were chandeliers, I took a picture of those that, I was trying to, some, somebody donated to the White House, you know, when they did the electrification. And he had a lot of information that I can't remember at all, but it was, it was very, it was very friendly once it was not many people there, you know? So, I mean, I thank you all for letting me go because I do think it was really worthwhile.
That sounds good.
Thank you. Excellent. So then, that'll bring us then to the Park and Rec Commission. And we have Casey here.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll make this brief, as brief as I can anyways. We've had a busy year so far. The busiest thing we've been doing as of recently is updating our five-year plan, which we hired Gosling Zubek to help us with. Gone very well. It's been busy, a lot of information crammed into short meetings, but it's gone very well. It's moving right along, which you guys also have the approval for the public input session on the, on the plan, on the agenda for later. And Miles Kimberly Park, the logging was completed this spring. Scott's done a great job of getting that cleaned up. There was a lot of cleanup to do. The driving range is where they used for landing for the logs, a lot of bark and stuff. Deering's did do a good job of cleaning it up, but of course, it needed to be smoothed off and grass seeded and whatnot. So, that was a pretty big project for Scott. And also, there was a lot of stumps and sticks left on the trails in the woods. He spent a lot of time cleaning that up. We had Deering's come back and help us a little bit with some of that, and we might look at doing some more this fall because there's a lot of short stumps and stuff that people can trip over along the trails. And unfortunately, Scott was hurt, as all of you know, that set us back, but Jerry and Dwayne have done a great job of keeping the grass cut, and the parks still look great. We, this year, we've seen more, well, in the last couple of years, more people wanting to use the parks for special events and large events. And, you know, the parks have always been first come, first served, but they're wanting much larger than just family picnics or soccer games or anything like that. So, we've tried to address that with the new parks use policy and get that developed. It's still kind of in the works, and we've kind of done it on the go as different obstacles have come up, and insurance and everything, and people not wanting to abide by it. But Chad and Morov helped us through that. There was a concert in the park, in Old Settlers Park, the Simon and Garfunkel concert. I know, you went this year?
I was there.
Yeah. It went fairly well, but the parking situation is not great. It's just too many people for that park. I don't know if they plan to do it again next year, but we're going to have to take a hard look at that, if that comes up again. And Veronica Valley Park recently held a invasive species seminar on how to get rid of Autumn Olive, which the people came and were demonstrating on how to remove it, so it helped us out a lot and taught a lot of people on how to, how to deal with it, how to get it out of there. Other than that, everything has gone pretty well. Scott's done a great job of upkeep. We do have the Grub Shack remodel coming up next year. We had hoped to get that done this year, but we couldn't get a contractor to do it. But we do have approved bid for 28, a little over $28,000 to do in the spring, early summer, whenever they can get to it. That'll be a pretty big project, something that's needed to be done for a while, and want to get that done. Other than that, that's all of the big things. I don't know if there's any questions? Oh, that, oh, tennis courts. You ought to, you know, Mark, why don't you talk to him?
Well, we're working with Greenwich Schools on potential partnership to build eight tennis courts. We had productive discussions for the past year. I met with members of the school board, their superintendent. There was a change in leadership there this June, so that kind of put a hold on it. Mr. Hoover now is the superintendent. He and I have been in dialogue. We developed a sample draft contract just to start the dialogue going, and they authorized me to talk to the school's law firm, which I knew from my previous career, so it's worked out well. And there's no question, it can be done. Both attorneys said yes, this is doable, just a matter of the details. I'm actually going to go to Greenwich Schools, I think, Thursday.
Thursday for the farmers' park.
Pop-up market, I'm going to go there and talk to Mr. Hoover, but he was very excited about this potential partnership. It'd be eight courts. There's one tennis team for entire Leland County. All the schools participate in one court, so it really would be a county-wide project. They would have first priority during the seasons, but the rest of the time, they open to public. So, it's a way for the school to form a partnership and create a win-win situation, and for the public to have those courts available the majority of the year. And so, we think it's a win-win. They do verbally agree to the financial part of it, to pay for it, and then we have to work out the details. But I'm optimistic that we'll be able to form some type of partnership. They do have a new school board there, too, so it's been a little bit of a step back just because of changes at Greenwich. Mr. Hoover's optimistic, I'm optimistic. I think the Parks and Rec Commission is optimistic.
Yeah.
Just let's get this happening, get it done.
Who would be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep?
Well, that's, we have to work out the details. We've had some dialogue. I don't want to go into details, it's a former school board, so I don't want to come say anything publicly, but those are kind of issues we have to work out. But we seem to get the same page in terms of who's going to do what, so.
Anything else? Commissioner, answer.
When the Parks Commission gets through this analysis as far as, you know, what the rules are going to be as far as reserving space at the parks, I'd be very interested in seeing that.
Okay.
But that's the county policy, so we have to go to the county.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, I want to understand, you know.
And there's still, yeah, because we haven't developed any reservations, there is no reservations. It's, but when they help hold these events, you're giving them permission to hold the event, but it's still first come, first served. If somebody, if they get there and there's a family reunion going on or something, then that's something they have to work around. But yeah, but that's the way it's always been, and we're trying to not have reservations.
Okay. Well, I just want to understand what we're doing.
Yeah.
Mr. Long?
So, just a point of clarification, we do have a lot of kids in the county that play are on the tennis teams at Traverse City schools. So, are they, can they participate instead on the Leland?
No, those are high school sports teams, so they have to be part of the high school to participate. So, all the students attending any school in Leland County can play on the Leland County tennis team. Traverse City has their own tennis team.
But are children from Leland County that attend Traverse City schools must do the Traverse City school teams?
They can certainly use the courts. Courts will be able to do that.
Well, certainly, but, but they, they cannot.
They cannot be on the Leland County.
Leland County team.
Because they're not students of the co-op team.
Of the co-op team.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorslo.
Casey, I, I know that the Autumn Olive is a plant that really has a desire not to be eradicated. Did they give you any, what were they recommending as how to get rid of it?
Cut it off or round up on it? Or brush round up on it?
Oh, dear. Okay.
Or you have to cut it, because if not, it's, you're basically wasting your time.
And you're not, I'm not, I shouldn't say pour it on. Brush it on is a much smaller amount compared to that. But that's really the only option to, to kill it.
Get rid of it.
And it's effective.
Do we have any Japanese knotweed in any of our parks? Do we know?
Not that I know of. Veronica Valley's the only one that's been checked, but they didn't find any there.
One other question in regards to the Veronica Valley Park. There was some discussion about grant funding, and where are we at on that?
Once the five-year plan is complete, we are hoping to reapply for the grant this, in 2020.
So, that'll be in 2020?
Yes. But the five-year plan has to be done first before that.
Correct.
We can get that applied. It'll be a tight, it's going to be quite a tight timeline, but that, we're still hoping to. But we'll have to come back before the board to do that.
You want to talk about the park?
Sure. Steve Steyer was actually at our last meeting and gave us a brief update on the poor farm barn. They've been working on it quite a bit. They have reinforced the foundation, they are working on some structural work on the inside of it, some of the A-frame, and they've made quite a bit of progress on it. And they were asking us about removing, kind of basically rearranging some dirt to smooth out a couple humps that they've been dealing with, with coming in and in and out of there with some traffic, and put a small amount of gravel just off the road, basically to kind of outline where the driveway is or where the driveway starts, so that they don't have people trying to go in different directions.
It seems to me when we were out there, there was two entrances. One was the main entrance, and I think it was elevated.
Yeah, it's off of, well, there's one off of Cold Springs Road, which is what would be nice to use so that you're not coming in, in and off the busy road. You can kind of go on the, and people have been more so coming off of, like, from Miles Kimberly Way. And they're trying to get that rerouted over Cold Springs Road. Just a little bit safer, and they're, you know, and they're working on stuff and bringing trailers in. It's been, the incline has been a little bit difficult to deal with, and they're scraping up some grass, and they just kind of want to level it off, and they're going to reseed it and, and everything.
Who's going to do the actual work?
I don't know if they had it contracted. It's on their, their leased piece of property. I don't, I don't know if they had planned to do that themselves with a tractor or if they're.
They were going to go out and get some bid.
Okay.
But they recovered the cost of that.
Yeah. And I don't know if you have anything else to add, Chad?
No, the garden went, did well.
Yeah, it did great again this year, yeah. They had some flowers in front of it this year. Looked, looked really nice. It's, that's been a great project, really nice.
I think the sunflowers are still there.
Yeah, waiting for the birds to come eat them.
Commissioner, so this little, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Did you have something else?
No, no, I asked my question. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, Mur?
Well, the one big issue, beavers.
No beavers this year. Thank God. They, they could come back at any time, but there's nothing there right now.
All right. Anything else, anyone? Thank you very much.
There's a bunch of them over there.
Thanks, Casey.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Casey.
Okay, then we have the Cedar River renovation project.
Maybe Commissioner Lauter can give us a brief update or introduce her.
Yeah, sure. Coming up, we have Ray Pleva, Mr. Cedar, and Mary Taylor with us today. They've been working very hard on a project that we would like to get off the ground as soon as possible. It's going to take funding, of course. They put together a great video highlighting how beautiful the project would be and a lot of the great things that it does. So, do you really want to speak to it before the video, or do you want to play the video?
No, let's show the video, and then we can.
Leland County is, in anyone's book, one of the most desired destinations in the whole country. Tucked away from most of the limelight attractions, the Cedar River is a hidden sanctuary, a picturesque landscape, where the river flows in a winding, three-mile wilderness path, completing its beautiful journey in the glorious, spring-fed waters of Lake Leland, then flowing all the way into Lake Michigan, over the falls in Leland. The stunning watershed found here presents a nearly unseen world of protected nature and is nestled near the community of Cedar. For most of us, driving through town offers perhaps a quick glimpse of the river. Yet, you'll find few visitors, or even locals, that have experienced the adventure of this beautiful solitude. The Cedar River Marina Project will be a recreation area for families to enjoy.
I think this is just one more place to bring your family and recreate. It's nice to know that we have access points where you can control boats in and out quickly.
This project is very important, not only for water supply, but also for rescue. Our fastest access to the lake is Green Bay's river. We need water 24 hours a day here, and it's five days a year. Currently, we don't have that much water, and what they're planning on doing, give us a water window, drop the bowl of the ice, and still allow us to pull water from the river.
This is a classic example here in Cedar River, one of the wild areas we have in the county.
And every time I paddle from Cedar to Lake Leland, it's the closest I can get to what Canada looks like, being in the shade.
I think having access to the river system is important.
I think it's what the community needs because we're closest to Traverse City. We're going to have some progress. We're going to develop some, but we want to do it smartly, and we want to do it with the idea of recreation and natural areas in mind. And this project is going to really add a lot to the Cedar community, Leland County community. I think it's going to be good for the ecology of the river. It's got something for everyone. It's got the universal access component, so everyone can have access to the Cedar River, a new place to explore for most people. It's not very visited by many recreationists, and so, it's kind of a new adventure.
And a new way to make the river and lake resources more accessible. The marina will be creating for all of us the opportunity to experience the nearby beauty of wildlife firsthand by providing a safe, easy launching point for boats, kayaks, canoes, and paddleboards. and paddleboarders. And it will have the region's first universal access lift. The family-oriented marina with beautifully designed picnic areas will be a valuable place here in the heart of the county. Besides the recreational uses, your financial support of the Cedar Marina Project will bring the added benefits of supplying fire departments with year-round access to a reliable water source, plus providing law enforcement and rescue better, quicker access, an improvement for sheriff and 911 needs in South Lake Leland emergencies and enforcement. The marina will also become the first in Leland County that provides a universal access lift for our friends with disabilities, giving everyone a way to experience the river, Lake Leland, and points beyond. The marina will be a gateway for families to enjoy trips into this wilderness and Lake Leland, and even reach Leland as a destination, all while being just a stone's throw from downtown Cedar. We will create a beautiful access point worthy of this gently flowing gem. To the artist, the Cedar River is an ever-changing wilderness stream. To the fisherman, it's a place for the family to fish, for panfish and perch. The more serious fishermen to pursue seasonal fishing trophies. The birdwatcher sees countless varieties season after season. And to the kayakers, boaters, canoeers, and paddleboarders, it's providing access to a most beautiful resource. Most of all, the Cedar River Project will be a place for families and friends to enjoy, a place that will surprise you at every bend.
They call it the hidden gem for a reason, it's like a little hidden tideway spot.
So that's the good news for Leland County. We started this project in 1983 because it was the old lumber mills, shingle mills, the train went across.
Pickle factory.
And so we got all that taken care of, and worked with the DEQ and the DNR, and now the first part of the project will be to take the bridge off, which also, it was first set up as a snowmobile bridge, but it's a walk bridge, safety bridge, and anybody that's in a wheelchair or walker has easy access from one side or the other. And, but when we bring it back after it's all sandblasted and painted, Chip Janik asked if we could raise it two feet, and we will. Never thought of it until Chip brought that up, because it makes it easier access for kayaks and canoes to go underneath and go upstream aways. So that will be done. And we will have another recommendation from Trudy Gella, when we met with them a long time ago, to enclose our bathrooms. If you're going to have a first-class marina, you don't need to have your porta-johns out there. And so that will be all cement block, and we're going to have the largest handicap bathroom and another regular bathroom in that block area. So that'll look good for the marina and be sufficient for anybody that needs to use a restroom. And the handicapped and universal access lift was designed by Adam Begley, he's sitting right behind me. He lives between Cedar and Leland, and we're excited to work with Adam on that because it has several options for getting people from the shore onto a boat, onto a pontoon, or whatever they need to get on. And it doesn't matter what age, they can, that can be done. And we'll be the first in the county to have one of those. And then we're going to have a kayak canoe launch, then you bring your kayak on the deck, and you slide right down into the water, and you don't touch the water at all. And when you come back, you come halfway up, and you give yourself one little pull, and you're on top of the deck again. And nobody in the county has one of those either. And then we are going to have a filled water pipe for the party department, and it's going to be set up that they'll be able to access water 365 days a year. And so we're excited about that part of it. The dredging before was done five feet, and we ran into about 250 wood, 250,000 wood shingles and some logs that were over 22, 23 inches across. But now to develop our fish habitat that we're going to have, which will be the first in the county, we need to go eight feet deep. So we know we're going to bring up some more of the old timers, wood shingles, and possibly some logs, and maybe some other treasures. But the fish habitat will be developed on both sides of the river, and like Sheriff Mike Barkovich said, we don't have one in that part of the county. We are short of that. Where a father or mother can take their children or grandchildren down and fish off the decks, we aren't having a boat. So they'll be able to do it off of both sides and the Red Bridge. And then we're going to enhance our boat launch, and we also want to put in a boat wash station. You're hearing more of that all the time from people coming from other lakes or coming out of Lake Leland. We want to make sure that we can offer that, and that'll be incorporated with three rain gardens that we're going to develop on the north side of the river, because our parking lot will be asphalted for the boat parking, and that's the same asphalt driveway they use for recycling. So it's going to be a combination benefit for both. And to control the silt, this was always an issue. And now there is silt fans. And Rodden Schmidt from the DEQ, when I had her down there and I was talking to her about that, and she said, yes, you can use those, we are using them now. And what it is, when the water comes from underneath the road, it's only maybe 30 feet wide. Then the river opens up, and that, you can't see the silt, but over time, a week, two weeks, month, it settles to the side. But with the silt fans, we'll be able to keep that in the middle of the river, and that way we can control the fish habitat that we develop underneath the decking that we're going to have. So we're trying to do this right, because this is the last time we're doing it. And then the raised decking on the Baldimons side will be approximately 300 feet long, which will be double of what we had before. So we'll be able to have several boats, pontoons, whatever, be able to pull up and park just while they come. There's no overnight parking. And Sheriff Barkovich recommended that we would put in a 911 phone on a pole with a blue light that would be there 24 hours a day, 365 days, that if anybody ever needed an emergency phone and didn't have a regular phone or whatever, they could, you couldn't call your wife and say, what do you got for lunch? Because that ain't going to happen. And then the big seven-foot rock that my wife and I have up by our store, we're donating that, and that's going to be moved down by the river for the new river sign and for information sign and so forth. The plaque's going to be put on it, and that's pretty much, but there is no marina in northern Michigan that will have what we have, and here it is in Leland County. Now, you say, how are you coming with the fundraising? We received a check for $150. We received a check for $1,000. We received a check for $5,000, and we received a check for $20,000, and that was from the Art and Mary Smucker Family Foundation. And that is to be used for matching grants for others. And Mary Taylor that's here with me, she's our lead grant writer, and we have a team of, that are working on this. So what we'll be applying for, small grants, state grants, federal grants, because there's different parts of this project that some grants will pay for, and there's some that aren't. And so we have to look and see which opportunity. And we hope to do this project under budget of $900,000. But when it's done, it is going to look very, very nice, and it's going to be done right, and it's going to be landscaped right. And the lead engineer for us is Larry Fleece of Fleece and Vanderbrink. What's nice about Larry is, he's from Cedar, even though his companies are throughout the whole state. And we also been working with, as a consultant, Frank DeTuri and Brett Fesel. Brett works for the Grand Traverse Band, and Frank did, now Frank works for the city of Traverse City. But both of those were the engineers for the Boardman River Project. And I asked them for their support for developing the fish habitat. So that when it's done, we had the best of us to ask for help. And they agreed, they both went out to the river, and so we're excited what we can do not only for Cedar, for the community, for the county, but for the state of Michigan. Has anybody on the board ever been down the Cedar River?
Right.
So you know what we're talking about. I mean, once you get around that first bend, you're like in a whole different world. It's so peaceful that some wives go just to get away from their husbands.
Be sure, answer.
But only get it once.
Is the pedestrian bridge still going to be used for snowmobiles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If we cut that out, we'd be in trouble. Now, we do have a.
Commissioner Law, you had a question?
Okay.
Did you?
No, no question.
Commissioner Rushton?
Ray, what's the deepest point in that river? Do you know?
As you go down the river, anywhere from three and a half to five feet.
Okay.
And it's anywhere from 150 to, some places almost 200 feet wide.
It's been years since I've been on that river, and I couldn't remember the depth, you know, if it was.
I can take my pontoon up and basically leave the motor down and not have any problem.
Okay.
But, you know, you got to use some common sense, depending on how many people you've got on your pontoon, too.
Sure.
We'd like to see a paddleboat from Cedar going all the way to Leland. Then you're only taking up this much water, and would that be nice, seeing that going down the lake?
Yeah, Commissioner Rushton.
Yeah, I was interested in the handicapped and lift. Does it operate like a boat lift? Is it a hand crank, or is it an electric lift, or?
It's electric, yes. And we had two options for 350 or a 600 pound. Well, we took the 600 pound, just to play safe. And it, it works smooth, it's quiet, and it'll put you in, in a boat or on a pontoon, wherever you want it to stop, you set it down. So they're very, very efficient.
Is it a fabric seat?
There's a chair seat or a fabric seat. You have an option.
And are they going to both be stored right there?
Yes.
Deck box or something, or?
It will. And if you were out and the power went out, that has enough battery power for the whole day to get you back off onto land. So you're going to be covered that way also.
That sounds like our phone it does.
Commissioner Rushton?
There's some chatter about the same type of apparatus for getting those with disabilities in and out of boats down at the Elwood, there, at the old cold docks. That's something we've been hearing about down there, so get yours done first.
Well, we would like to do the first phase next spring, and painting of the bridge to bathroom, and the lift is our one of the top three, and then getting the dredging done. I mean, that's, because that holds up everything else. But the other thing, we looked at several different ways of putting our decking out there for, and now we're looking at floating decks. Because the river, when it rains, goes up and down, it goes up and down. And even though if we had a stationary deck and it went down, the fire department would come and rinse it off, but with the floating one, you don't have that issue. So we're doing our homework. We're trying to see what's going to be best for the community, and, but it's going to be a real asset for the county. It really, really is. And we got a good team working on it, working on it every day.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, a person is finding the video online, they want to watch it again and again, and.
Yeah, we're going to have a GoFundMe page. The video there is just a little bit shorter, because if people pull it up on a GoFundMe page, they might not, this is a little over four and a half minutes than what you've seen today. And we were blessed to have Ron Jolly from WTCM do the voiceover for this one. And my daughter Cindy did the voiceover for the GoFundMe page one. And then they made up a video for me, and there's no voiceover. But it's the song Going Down the River on a Sunday afternoon, is played through the whole video, and they're showing that. And I tell you what, it gets, some of you guys that are a little bit older can remember that song. It is really, really nice, makes it what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so then we'll move on to approval of the board minutes. We have here September 17th, September 10th, and October 1st. Commissioner.
Approve the board, approve the executive board meeting minutes of Tuesday, September 10, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Lawner?
Move to approve regular session minutes of Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We want to do October 1st. Commissioner Wessel?
Move to approve the executive board meeting minutes of Tuesday, October 1, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Now that comes to approval of our agenda. I don't have any late additions or additions.
Move to.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We now have an agenda. So that brings us to public comment. Mr. Chair, can you pull the comment anytime during your, say, the action items? No, no, this is the time for public comment, so if you have something to talk about, now's the time to do it. You have five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yes. And we just asked that you state your name, where you're from.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, County Administrator Janik and your staff, I was extremely reluctant to appear tonight.
Your name? No, no, you can touch that, it's going to make it go off. I was just asking if you state your name, sir.
Warren Hutchinson.
Okay, thank you.
I live in Bingham Township. I live in Bingham Township.
Yes.
And I'm here tonight to discuss with you and hope you listen to a recommendation I have on this road closure concern. I'm a retired state police detective lieutenant and I retired out of Traverse City a long time ago. I came up here in 1960. And when I retired, I was given a, or asked to come to work for the Department of Natural Resources. And I worked for the Department, for the Department Attorney General during that time and I investigated all of the suits filed against the VNR. I had the entire state, all 83 counties, and I had a legal secretary and we processed between 100 and 110 civil actions per year. My background has a lot to do with civil liabilities. I'm really concerned about road closures in this incident. I don't know if you realize who you're dealing with on this Iron Man so-called. Are you familiar with the owners of the corporation? Any of you, okay? I didn't think so. It's called Dalian Wanda Group. It's a mammoth conglomerate out of China, Beijing. And they had press release August 26, 2015, in which they reached an agreement to acquire 100% of the World Triathlon Corporation, WTC, for $650 million. Iron Man is WTC and they are housed down in Tampa, Florida. So what we're dealing with is not a county entity or a state or United States, it's a Chinese conglomerate. And it came in here, what really bothers me is my, because of my background, was how it was handled on road closures. I personally experienced it and it was not very well done. I don't know if any of you have seen the contract with this corporation or this entity or not. Have you been allowed to look at the contract?
No.
Okay. So, right now, people think, and I'm not defending the state police, I'm saying, people think, well, the state police should've gotten this, should've got permits. How do we know that? What's in the contract with this mammoth conglomerate, China? It might be in there where they were responsible to get the permits. When I was in state police, the only time that we were allowed to close a road was for emergency purposes. This is not an emergency, so someone didn't follow through and do what they're supposed to do. I don't like political people saying, well, we'll talk about this, we don't have to go to Lansing. Yes, you do have to go to Lansing. You have to have the attorney general involved in this to do it properly, so it's investigated properly, so there's no concern about it being done properly at the local level. I don't like the attitude of Trevor Petz, who, he was cavalier about his comments. The next time he said, they'll just have to seek a different route or stay home until the event is over with. What an attitude. And also, Peninsula Township, Grand Traverse County, was asked to have that event held on their township. And they said, no, we're not going to have it on that township. And I think if you checked with them, you'd find that to be accurate. They said, we have enough of them up here. So what I'm asking to do is look into this, through the legal process, the attorney general, they'll find out what really happened, he's responsible for it, and if it's the state police, then they're gonna be held accountable for it.
Your five minutes are up.
I think the best thing to do is say, no, not in this county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any others, please, come forward, yeah. I have another person coming forward to speak.
I kinda, Bruce Price, like, well, I kinda up my status, him and I, the officer and I have been friends for about 60 years, so no bad, nothing bad ever happened between us, so you know. Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Bonick, I cut that picture, oh, the enterprise, and the first thing I thought of was maybe you're getting closer to the pass through on the seven-oh boat on the 2% money. What I'd like to talk about here is that, what's going on with Verizon and the tower up here. And I'm reading the pretty good antibiotics, and I think most of you do, free markets, Republicans, but not government. Wife and I have spent a lot of money with lawyers dealing with Verizon for three and a half years, but the same thing, we can go on this tower, that tower. There's three of us involved in this, I can't speak for the other two. But I would say that let them go out in the free market with the property owners, that they cost a lot of, costs a lot of attorney fees to do it right. And not only Verizon is involved, there's two other companies here and I can't speak for them, so I think you need to do a little more research and just tell them to go away and don't put it on government taxpayers' land, 'cause I hate to pay two ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Dale Schab from Waykewaunaw. It's always hard to follow Bruce, but I'm gonna try and do my best. The reason I'm here tonight is to speak about what I feel are ethics about government-elected officials. And I had a situation last week where I felt my First Amendment rights were violated by an elected judicial official. And furthermore, upon more investigation, I do believe strongly that my First Amendment rights were violated. With that said, I'm concerned about the ethics of this commission as well, using organizations to promote what I would call special interest groups. And one of the things that are currently coming up is the early childhood development millage proposal. And I was at a public gathering, public was invited. I believe I'm part of the public, I'm not in prison, I'm here in Leilin County, I am a citizen of the United States of America, I can prove it. But I was told, I was there passing out some information and just passing it out. I was not pro, con, or otherwise, I just was passing out information. And I was told that I had no right to be there and that I had to leave. And that particular person was the only one that was harsh. All the other people that were speaking to me were very kind, very gentle, except for the one person who told me I had to leave on public, on school grounds. And I was invited there, but I was told I had to leave. I and my wife, excuse me, my wife and I went outside and we proceeded to talk to people outside, saying hi, here's some information you'd like to pass out. And we did. It was frigid, it was cold, but we did it. We had a lot of people stop and talk to us that were not from a interest in what we're passing out, but they acknowledged it and they were very kind as well. The other thing I find ethically wrong is with this commission, or good portion of this commission, is to using an organization to endorse a special interest group that wants millage to fund something like early childhood development. As you know, we all pay for it through our state taxes. It seems like we're adding more government to more government locally, costing us more and more money. And you hear a lot of things, but I look at my mom, I'm her caregiver. I'm not probably, properly cleaned, properly dressed, but after work tonight, I had to go take care of her and today she had a bad day. But when you take that additional amount out of her budget per year, it makes it very tough for them. I don't think there was a lot of thought process put into this. Sutton's Bay preschool, they closed it down, lack of interest, not enough children. So I question, where does this money really go? Does it just go to salaries? Looks like I kinda have an idea, that's all it's going for. Or is it going to, like, Leland's Children's Center to support their staff? I don't know. I really don't know. But I believe it's unethical on how some of you commissioners act and how you try to achieve your goals through special interest groups or for special interest groups.
Dale, your five minutes are up.
I'm sorry, I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, please, come forward.
Good evening, Steve Mikowski Lake Leilin. I sort of, I pretty well agree with Mr. Hutchinson, because I gave each of you before the meeting a copy of these, these two letters, and I believe this is a sentiment that is expressed by many people in our county over the issue. And I see this under agenda as an activist issue, road closure discussion, as I'm saying, I assume it means Iron Man, but we don't wanna use that word. But we were aware that this was a Chinese corporation for some time and one of the things that is, is difficult to understand is the lack of interest in a part of all elected public officials in the county throughout this process. No one asked any hard questions in this process. It says, has somebody put a blanket, a cloud over all elected officials in the county not to ask any questions as this event was being planned and railroaded by a foreign government almost, or a foreign corporation from somewhere else? And we just allowed it to happen. So I guess, and we relied on verbal, verbal, a lot of verbal promises, everything was going to be okay. I guess, and it's typical of local governments, they tend to listen to verbal discussions and believe that they'll always work properly that way. On another issue, the early childhood development issue, I agree with, I'm following this up with Mr. Schab. I believe that we set up a sort of a mobocracy to get this early childhood development going. The people who normally would want to have an interest in this would come to the county government or township government and demand this because they recognize a problem. This was not the case. The people never came to the county and demanded action on early childhood development. Obviously, they didn't, because they didn't perceive a problem. But someone else saw a, a solution that had to be found for a problem. So we did a hell of a job of doing that and we're gonna put on a ballot, enforce the position of a ballot, because we hope that people are not properly informed and we raise taxes for something that is not mandated by the legislature, by our government law, by Michigan Compiles Law. This is not a county function, education is not a county function. And now, I looked at my agenda for Leland Township and then on the agenda, it's, we're going to have a presentation by county, county special interest to come to Leland Township's meeting next Monday, to, I expect to advocate and tell the township officials to tell the people to vote for this measure. I find it very intriguing and I think it is a misuse of, of public officials and I think it's interfering with township government. The county is beginning to interfere with township government. And I hope you think seriously about it, because I'll take this issue up at the township meeting next Monday, and we'll see what's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Please, come forward. You can, go ahead, you said, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Brian Keesling, I live in Elwood Township and I've only been in the area for 19 years, so, kind of a new guy, but I think it's a voice you all need to hear a little bit. I'm a physician that works at Monson Hospital, I participated in the Iron Man and I'm a big supporter. The Iron Man is a Chinese conglomerate, started out as a US business that was sold, but let's face the fact that it's carried out in cities across the United States throughout the, throughout the season. Madison, Wisconsin holds it two times during the year, you know, Louisville, all across the whole, the whole United States they have and worldwide, so, you know, it started out initially and was sold. But I gotta tell you that at the introductory meeting for the Iron Man, the organizer, which it was, you know, and I, I don't deny that there were a lot of pickups, I mean, it was a mess, I agree. But I do know that there was some inconsistency with the road closures and things like that. I witnessed cars going across the road myself. My 17-year-old daughter went from where I live, in Elwood Township, over to Garfield at noon, just with some planning, she got let across the course as well. So I do know that there was some inconsistencies there that need to be worked out. I also, you know, for 15 years, I've been an Iceman and that changes every year to make the people in Calcasca, you know, more satisfied with the race, things like that. So, Leilin County is one of the healthiest places to live in the, in the state, you know, it's been, recognized as that over and over. So what a better function to support that. But at the beginning of the, when they had the introductory meeting, the organizer said, you know, normally we're petitioning for volunteers at this thing right now, but we can't take any more volunteers. We have over 1,500 volunteers from the local community that have already stepped up. The, the community support was incredible. I mean, you're out, you know, south of Empire, you're kind of in very rural area and there are people at the end of their driveway, you know, with their kids and everyone's tearing you up. It was, it was just, you know, really, it was a very exciting, very positive experience. But I do, you know, there hasn't been a lot of support for it, there's been a lot against it. And I do know, I can tell you that a lot of people do support it, there was all these volunteers, all this activity, and I just think that, you know, you need to hear another side of it as well. Thank you.
Here is a Midas Leland, Leland Township. I was here last week and I got some nice comments at the end, some people like to see me again, so I'm back. To report some of my, what happened, I read a flyer last week about this early childhood, call it what you want, development, whatever, and it was an opposing view of what some others had. And I had some extra flyers and I went around, I went to my post office, I went to my postmaster and I showed it to him and I asked him if I can post this on his bulletin board. He says, yes, we will encourage additional information. So I posted it on the board.
Sorry.
It's not a fire alarm.
Your five minutes are not up. Your five minutes are not up.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I, you know, I go there almost every day to pick up my mail, and I go there, and then I see another bulletin promoting this meeting at the Suttons Bay High School for the League of Women Voters, right next to it. I go there another day, mine's gone. My flyer's gone. So I put up another one. The next day I go, my flyer's gone. So I put up another one. After the third one, I didn't touch their flyer. I don't touch their flyers. I tell people that, they say, well, why don't you take theirs down? That's not the way it should be done. We have to share information. So I went to the postmaster, and, well, the next time I went there, both of them are gone. I go to the postmaster, I says, you know, I've been, he says, yes, he says, you were very nice about it. He says, but some other people came in, and I'm not going to mention any names, and he says, they were really too much, and he says, I don't want conflict. I took them both down, and now nobody will know anything. That's not good. You got to share information. I said last time when I was here, let's get along, you know? There's two sides to things, okay? I think what I read last week was fairly, I think it was factual, okay? And I don't agree with what's trying to be opposed on the county. Another thing I found, a lot of people didn't even know there was an election coming. But anyway, that happened in a couple spots. I just mentioned that one, but that happened in a couple spots. And I think it's really, you got to, those people taking those down have to be calmed down a little bit. I know they're zealous about their cause, but that's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. So that brings us then to the recess for our statutory annual meeting and open public budget hearing. We have our final staff report.
The, sure. The budget was available all week long in the office. It is presented to you as balanced, the way you directed through all the meetings. It is balanced at $13,526,898, which is actually a slight decrease from the 2019 budget. And I really have nothing more than everything we went through, unless there are any specific questions, but it is balanced. We did have to, to balance it, we did use fund balance forward of $874,432, which again is a lot less than what we had to use to balance in 2019. But of course, remember, we did have significant projects too, so we, we don't want to just make that sound like, wow, it was a lot less, but it was considerably less. And I don't know by the time the revenue comes in if we will actually need to even dip into the fund balance, but we won't know that till, till we get the revenue and we see how expenditures go. So it is balanced.
So this is public comment time. This is not for the commissioners at this time. So if there's anyone wants to comment anything about the budget, this would be the time to come forward for that. Mr. McCauskey.
I'm just curious, a few years back, or the county was reporting, top line, one or two-page report with a summary of the budget itself, and I'm curious, I've been very busy, I haven't had a chance to get in here, I was curious whether that top line, one or two-page report with all the accounts is available at the office, it is.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, then, was there any commissioner comment?
I have a question. Michelle, is that information available on the website at this time?
No, we don't. It's just, it was noticed in the paper that they could come in if anyone called to receive it. I think someone called to get something, and it was emailed. But once it's done, we can post a synopsis on there, and we're happy to email out what we can.
Okay.
Okay. So, so are there any other questions or comments? All right, then I'll close this public hearing, and we'll resume our statutory annual meeting. Chair? Yes. Could we take a three-minute break? Yes. Before we get into our action items, we'll take a brief three-minute break here. So be back here before 22:00. You heard.
We were, questions are. So Chat, I saw that, and I thought Rellander was called up first in the race.
All right, so. What's that?
Rellander was called up first.
All right. Number one here, we need the approval of the 2020 budget and the 2020 General Appropriations Act resolution. Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Please, please, silence, please. We're in our meeting.
So I would move to approve Resolution 2019-008, Leland County General Appropriations Act.
Second.
So can we do a roll call here on this?
That will approve the budget, the appropriations act, the budget, the staffing levels, the revenues, everything that is in the book. Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutiswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorg?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. So, does this, does this then do the Appropriation Act resolution as well?
It did everything.
Okay.
Before we move on, I think we really want to thank the clerk and your staff for all their efforts, just the long process. People don't realize, we start this in May, and behind the scenes, they have spent a lot of weekends in here getting ready to the budget. It's, I know you all come in, and we've had a lot of meetings all summer long, thank you for all your efforts, but behind the scene, a lot of work took place by the clerk and by Jen and Michelle and her staff, and Mrs. Novak also. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for all of your efforts.
Well done.
And on time.
And on time, as always.
Okay, so that brings us then to the road closure discussion. Commissioner Anzer, would you like to speak?
I would, thank you. This is a road closure issue. It is not an Iron Man issue. It is not a Traverse City tourism issue. I have talked to multiple people, and this was not a problem of theirs. They were following the information as they were informed to do, and unfortunately, they had bad information. So I, you know, we are referring this as a road closure issue, and it's not an Iron Man issue because it wasn't their fault. They were doing what they were told to do. The real problem comes down to MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, and the Michigan State Police. And the roads were closed, the process, MDOT's own process, they, on their website, they have the forms, they have the law, they have everything that should have been done, and it was not followed. So moving forward, we need to have an answer as far as, are we going to follow the process next year or not? Now, there is a second race already scheduled. It's sold out already, but the route is very open and subject to change. So we don't know where that's going to be for next year, how that's going to all shake out, but my focus has been on the process, and we should follow the process when we do road closures, both local roads and MDOT roads. So the issue now is, I understand there's some concern that we should make another effort to talk to MDOT and the state police to attempt to resolve this. We have that opportunity. You know, this race isn't until next year. There's time to do that if people still feel the need to do that. In my opinion, I think the information is already out there, you know, it's, MDOT's own process is online, and, you know, it wasn't followed. So, you know, we can attempt to, attempt to talk to MDOT and the state police again if you wish to do that. I'm not against that. There is time to do that if you feel, you know, if the rest of the commission feels the need to do that. But my bottom line is, I feel that there is a need to follow the process, to follow the law, and MDOT has the forms out there to do this, it just wasn't done. So I'm open to the discussion as far as whether we want to ask the Attorney General to investigate this and rule on this. I don't think it's going to be a long investigation or overly complex one. It's pretty black and white, but I'm open to that discussion if you want to take the time. So now's the time.
Anybody want to speak to this? Commissioner Rushton?
I did not attend the end of the event meeting. So could you share with us maybe some of the conversation that took place there? Were there other communities that were concerned about road closures? Or, I think it was mentioned by someone in public comment about a contract between the Iron Man Company and whoever. I mean, we don't have any of that information, do we?
No.
We weren't privy to any of that, so we really don't know if there was an arrangement prior to what the law states.
I might be a little too close to that, but Chat was at that same meeting, so I'll ask Chat to talk to this. I'm going to punt to you because you're a little more.
Well, back to your question, there were other townships and other counties there. Benzie County was there, several townships, Long Lake Township was there, the director of the DDA, the Downtown Traverse City Authority was there. All of them had issues, concerns with the race, with the process. The, the Road Commission from Leland County was there, they passed a resolution because three county roads were closed, and they did not go through the process. They never were requested to close a road. I outline what the state law is, and it's very clear, it's in the Michigan Constitution, it's Michigan Public Act 247, 322. I won't go through the whole act, but it clearly states that if a road is closed, if it's a county road, it has to be a local unit of government, and they have to approach the County Road Commission. If it's a state road, it has to be in a government, and they have to approach the Department of Transportation. It's black and white, and that's also for partial closure also. It's not just full closure. I would say overall, the discussion was fairly positive, with maybe the exception of the Michigan Department of Transportation. I did not get a sense from, there were two gentlemen there, one did a speaking, that they were receptive to the idea, and they basically said their interpretation of the law was different than what I read in terms of the state statute. And the state police, I thought, attempted, they said they'd be more dialogue. We did meet with them as part of our nine-on-one committee, and the gentleman who came to those meetings actually was very apologetic, and said they did have some internal issues. So I thought the state police was actually pretty upfront. That's just my opinion about the dialogue and the discussion, and agreed that changes had to be made. Many of these troopers were here for the first time. They were from anywhere throughout the state of Michigan. They did not know the roads. They did not know the side roads. People were coming up to them, and I felt, I mean, I felt any for them. Here's a gentleman who drove up that day, or lady, from somewhere, was assigned to a road, and had no idea the county were divert traffic and everything, so they were put in an awkward position. Everyone agreed that more dialogue needs to take place. I did request that Trevor Takash come to the last meeting here. He did come. I did request that he, if he could, set up a meeting with the Department of Transportation before this meeting here tonight. He was not successful in doing that. He did talk to the Department of Transportation this afternoon. I talked to him at four o'clock. There's no commitment for a meeting, or I asked him specifically, and I don't want to put words in his mouth or the Department of Transportation, if they would guarantee that the law would be followed for 2020, and I did not get a commitment from them. Trevor Takash did say he feels like he's a water boy because it's really, it's the city of Traverse City that approved the event, and it's the Department of Transportation. He's kind of the in-between. Obviously, he played a major part of it, but he did say there's a lot of dialogue going on, will be for next year's race. The question is, would they commit to following the state law as outlined? And I could not get that commitment. I have not personally talked to anyone from the Department of Transportation, other than at that one meeting that was the after-race thing. But as you remember, we, Mr. Takash was here, he was hoping to set up a meeting, that I suggested was a meeting with our chairman, with Mr. Anzorg, myself, and the Department of Transportation, and I have not had a response to that request, nor did I get a phone call from anyone saying that they wish to have a meeting with us.
And MDOT's response is of concern to me. They don't interpret the law as it is written, and they may have a valid point, we don't know that. But I personally would like to see the issue resolved before we get to next year's race so that we can have a successful race for this county and other counties. So I think we need to get clarification so that we know how it should be for both sides. I would think that they would want the same thing, so.
And I point out to them and to the city that, take Leland County out of it, no matter where the race event is, there's going to have to be usage of the road. And so whether it's Leland County, whether it's Old Mission, whether it's Benzie, whether it's Long Lake, there still is a process in place that needs to be followed. So I should, as Commissioner Anzorg said, this is not an Iron Man issue, it's an issue of following the proper procedure. And the laws are pretty clear if you read the opinion, and other units of government have followed through locally, just Northport, when they closed for the uncaged, they went through the process. I know Lake Leland, when they had their music festival, they went to the Road Commission. One of my parents' neighbors in Cedar, Father Kent, not, they had a little party at his house, and he closed the street, and he had to get a permission from the Road Commission.
And the township.
And he had to go to the township. He went to the township first. I mean, that's an example, it was a one block in Cedar was closed, but they followed the process. And so what I've been saying, and what others are saying is, just follow the process. And it doesn't matter where it happens, but if it happens in Leland County, the Road Commission has to be involved if they're going to close a county road.
Commissioner Anzer?
The nice thing about the process is, you know, in MDOT's own process, if they had followed the process, they would have had a temporary traffic control plan, and it would have included where are the detours, where are the barricades, where are the police going to be stationed, you know, all that kind of stuff, you know? How can people get through? How can ambulances get through? That's all part of a traffic control plan. And if we had gone through the process, we would have had that plan in place, and things would have, you know, I think would have gone a lot smoother, but we didn't go, we didn't follow the process, and that's part of the problem. So, you know, that's where I'm struggling with, you know, if, and I'm anxious to hear from all the commissioners.
Commissioner Wessel?
I like, I like the shift in discussion around road closure and not the Iron Man, and thank you for that. That makes sense to me. Did we have problems? Sure we did. We had serious problems, and one of them was life-threatening. But I think we can learn from what we did, and I'm, I don't want us to immediately do a resolution to the Attorney General. I think we've got 11 months to plan and to fix and to sit down with partners, and if we get through the first part of the year and we don't have answers, then let's, let's seek legal help. But I think we can do it. I think we can sit down with MDOT, we can sit down with the Road Commission, we can sit down with the tourism people, we can sit down with the state police. I don't think we need to go to the Attorney General, and I read our resolution, and I agree with most of it. I think we got to figure out a solution to our problem. I just don't think we need to, as I said on my Commissioner Facebook page, it's like driving a nail with a sledgehammer, and I don't think we need to do that quite yet.
Commissioner Lotner?
I disagree. I think that that would be an important step for us to make, just because I think that is going to start the ball rolling, because we only have now, actually, about 10 months before the next race. So. So, my concern is that if we just set this aside, that then we won't be involved in that process. And I guess my concern is that, yes, it's, you can call it a road closure issue, but if this is the MO for this organization, then they expect to come back next year and use the same MO again. And, and that's my concern, because it clearly wasn't followed, and I think it was clearly not followed for a reason. So, there has to be changes. The race, as successful as it is, it's not bigger than the law. So, I think that that would, that is our first step. Let's find out that first, so that we do have that leg to stand on to move forward so we can make sure that it is followed next year. The race is already sold out, they're having the race. Unless, you know, they cannot follow the law or cannot get a place to do it, then that, that isn't our, that isn't our problem. Our situation is the road. I think we still need those answers because it was, it was just too big. It, it is very important that we find that answer, that solution, to make sure that everything runs as we were told it was going to run, because that would have worked. We would have been able to cross the roads, we would have been able to get our ambulances out of the county, we would have been able to go about our daily business if not for just some short delays. But I think it's important to move forward because we're not going to figure out where the breakdown happened unless we do.
I think that we've already had a lot of positive conversations about this, and that I think that people know that we've taken it very seriously. We feel that, you know, the rules weren't followed and that they should have been. And I think that it is possible, just through the publicity that we've already received about this, that people will understand now that they need to follow the rules and to comply. I question, you know, many of the other events that take place in the county, when we have other road races, whether they be, you know, running races or bicycle races, or whether we have festivals, Leland Uncaged, or the Empire Beer Festival, we just had Beer and Hops, you know, in Empire, whether they're following the proper procedures as well. I, I don't think it's necessary at this point to go to the Attorney General. I think that we're having positive conversations and that we will be able to resolve this before we're imposed upon again. And, you know, and they may change the route so that it doesn't even come through Leland County.
Well, I, I guess I'm just wondering how we can get a guarantee that the rules are going to be followed. I mean, how do we go about that so that our county doesn't get cut off again and then we're going through this again next year? I mean, what, what can we do, what can we do to ensure that that doesn't happen? I mean, if lives are put in danger and it happens again next year, you know, that's on us. Because we've had, we're having an opportunity now to do something. I mean, it, it seems like the Road Commission should be, the townships should be, but, but I don't see anyone else actually acting on it. And that's what worries me, is that, that if we just let this keep going and going, and then they're going to say we waited too long. So, so I'm, I'm real nervous about us just keep discussing it and not doing any kind of action. Commissioner Suss.
Commissioner Angorgi, is it your feeling now, after having had the discussions, that you feel it's necessary to go to the Attorney General? Or are you looking for, as Chairman Bunick says, a solution? A meeting of the minds, finding a way to ensure that there is a process and that the process be followed and that that process be identified and all agreed to?
May I answer?
Yes. Go ahead.
At the after-action committee meeting where we all met, you know, obviously, they heard, you know, our concern about the process. And I did not get any warm or fuzzy feeling from MDOT or the state police that anything was going to change. Now, that doesn't mean it won't, but I did not have that impression at all. You know, it was very short shift. They did not want to address that issue at all. So, and that wasn't the purpose of the meeting. The meeting was to identify, you know, problems, not to solve the problems. So, you know, I can't blame anybody for not attempting to address all the problems that were raised, because that wasn't the purpose of the meeting. It was to raise those issues. So, I don't know where we go next if we don't, you know, ask for somebody to resolve this. And in my opinion, the Attorney General is the correct office to make that determination because it does involve two state agencies, you know? That's, that's where we would go to get that addressed. But I also am sensitive that, you know, I have a bias because I was negatively impacted personally. So, I am open to, you know, if you want to wait another month and authorize our administrator to, to attempt to get a, a resolution from the MDOT and state police. I, you know, I can go along with that, but just saying, let's just wait, nothing is going to change.
Let me suggest this because I don't want to do this without the commission's approval. I have not personally talked to any MDOT official outside of the meeting. I had a private discussion with a state police trooper, but he's not the regional director. If you'd like to, I can personally contact those people prior to our November meeting. And if they can assure us they're going to follow the law, I can report back. If they're not, you can decide that time. November still gives you time to deal with it. They will start meeting for next year's races. The paths, as I understand, in January, those meetings will start. So, if you want to wait till November, as long as you feel comfortable, I'd be glad to contact the MDOT Director, Regional State Police Director, try to set up a meeting with them, privately get their assurances, get their perspective on this, and then report back next month.
Commissioner Suss.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And also, if you are, you ask them to clarify what their interpretation is, if it is different from ours, so that we do have that understanding and, and, but to ask them for their process and to ask them to clarify it and where they see that they should have maybe deviated or done something differently, I think that would be very helpful.
Mr. Locke.
Yes, two things. One is, I guess, one of my reasons for wanting to move forward, you can wait a month if you like, but, but is a couple of different things. One, if this is the method of operation for this organization, have they just been doing this everywhere they go? And if we don't get this answer, will they continue to do this wherever they go? And have there been other instances where they've had the same sort of problems that we have had this last August? So, the other thing, Chat, if you're going to, if we're going to go this route, is for you to please check with the fire chief. Cedar area fire has asked for, he has sent, put two complaints in, I don't know the departments he put those two complaints to, for the ambulance that was not allowed to cross the highway to get to North Light with a cardiac in the back. He, he's asked for some answers, and I have not heard he got those answers yet. And I know that that request went out right away in August, so I...
I'd be glad to contact him.
Yeah, you would, and see if that can, there can be some answers that way, too.
Commissioner West.
I like, I would like to put it off for a month. And I would, I would say that if we don't, in November, know that we've got the solution, then let's move forward and get help from, from the Attorney General. But I think that we need to sit down with the people, and I feel comfortable with that. And I, I would, I would hope that the administrator would do that.
Commissioner Red.
Well, I concur. I think that if it's necessary to go to the resolution route, I'm, I'm, you know, willing to do that with the Attorney General. But if we get some assurance of cooperation from MDOT and the Michigan State Police, then I will feel comfortable not having to do that.
Commissioner Red.
Then I will go along, and I will make the motion that we authorize the administrator to contact the Michigan Department of Transportation and the Michigan State Police and to gather additional information, including any additional information that we can gather from our local people, as well as information from MDOT and the Michigan State Police. And we'll discuss it at our next executive board meeting. That's my motion.
Support. Any other statements or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then that brings us now to the planning and community development, the out-of-state travel. Commissioner Locke.
I would move to approve out-of-state travel for Director Gala to attend the Brownfield 2019 conference, December 10th through the 14th in Los Angeles, California, and the amount not to exceed $2,000 in funds to come from the planning budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner Locke.
I would move to approve out-of-state travel for Brownfield member Kathy Egan to attend the Brownfield 2019 conference, December 10th through 14th in Los Angeles, California, with the amount not to exceed $2,000 in funds to come from the Brownfield budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner Red, let me rush to him, I'm sorry.
I would move to recommend to the Leland County Board of Commissioners to approve the probate court with up to a three-week period of overlap training for the new probate register.
Second.
Move to approve, not recommend? Yeah.
I'm sorry, move to approve.
Thank you.
I read that wrong.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner Locke.
I would move to approve the purchase of additional software license from Tyler Technologies Incorporated for the registered agent's office and the amount of $2,750 in funds to come from Automation Fund, ending in 970.000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Brings us to equalization approval. Yeah, Laurie here, speak to us.
Good evening, Laurie.
By the way, I'm sorry I wasn't here at your last meeting, but with tax rate request forms are not due to our office until September 30th, and October 1st was, along with the legal opinion, was impossible for me to pull off. So, thank you for allowing it to pass through this meeting. Statute does, though, require that you meet in October and approve the apportionment report. It has to be done prior to December 31st. The report itself, I will send in to the state in November, and that is because you could have a November election, and we do have a village request for the approval of the charter for the Northport-Leland Metropolitan Sewer District of .4 mils, which would begin in 2019 if it were approved. So, if it does pass, we will be back in conversation again in November, but you'd still have to pass an apportionment report in October. So, I'll go through the apportionment report. As always, we always have to try to show you here on the cover of the apportionment report, the top 10 acre owners by acreage in the county, with the United States National Park Service at 45,007 acres and 242 parcels, as the largest landowner by acreage in the county. The next, in your report, you'll see an index, and I'm going to refer to those tabs as we go through. The tab one is my letter to the board outlining the county board of commissioners' statutory responsibilities regarding the apportionment report. The main section of the law is included, and it indicates there that if there are questions, they refer to the prosecuting attorney for his opinion or corporate counsel. An opinion from corporate counsel was sought this year, and the board received a copy of it regarding the Glen Arbor Village Request for Roads. Tab two is the top 10 owners in the county ranked by taxable value report that is given to bonding agencies. It lists the top 10 owners with the number of parcels, the product or service they offer, the 2019 value of, the percent of taxable value that each owner represents to the whole. The top 10 taxpayers currently provide 2.48% of the total 2019 taxable value. This is up from last year, it's 2.46%. But again, the analysis still shows that the county's largest taxpayers are really a stable group and a diverse group. If you looked at your last year's report, all 10 were on last year's, they just changed positions a little bit from last year, but the same 10 that we had last year are on the report this year. Major taxpayers are part of the financial information included for bonding agencies. A sample bonding language is a bond rating, is a grade given to bonds that indicates their credit quality. Private independent rating services such as Standard and Coors, Moody's, and Fitch provide these evaluations of a bond's issuer's financial strength or its ability to pay a bond's principal and interest in a timely fashion. Tab three contains miscellaneous statistics. The first is the top 10 SEV, and this is simply an individual parcel, with Celebrate Life Trust as number one. The second report is the top 10 taxable values by an individual parcel, with Celebrate Life Trust as number one. The third is the top 10 owners by SEV value. In, in this report, we consider all of the parcels that that owner owns, Consumers Energy with 33 parcels as number one. The fourth is the top 10 owners by taxable value with all parcels they own, and Consumers Energy is again number one. The fifth report is the cover of the report, or the top 10 owners by acreage with the United States National Park is number one. A map of Leland County as we get to go into the townships shows that Leland, or it doesn't show, but Leland County is the second smallest county in the state in terms of square miles. Tab four would be the top 10 owners by taxable value by township. Bingham Township, number one, Black Star Farms. Centerville Township, number one, Leland Family Campgrounds. Cleveland Township, Consumers Energy, number one. Elmwood Township, Cedar Creek Commons Incorporated, number one. Empire Township, Consumers Energy Company, number one. Glen Arbor Township, Bayberry Group Incorporated, number one. Caston Township, Reith Riley Construction Company Incorporated, number one. Leland Township, Consumers Energy, number one. Leland Township, Celebrate Life Trust, number one. Solon Township, Cherry Land Rural Electric, number one. Sutton's Bay Township, Cherry Bee Orchards Incorporated, number one. Tab five is the city of Traverse City, Tom's Food Market, number one. Tab six is the tab for the villages, the Village of Empire, Storm Hill Cottage Trust, number one. Village of Northport, Holt's Family Properties LLC, number one. Village of Sutton's Bay, Bailey Enterprises Incorporated, number one. Tab seven would be our schools, Glen Lake Community, Consumers Energy, number one. Leland Public, Celebrate Life Trust, number one. Northport Public, Consumers Energy Company, number one. Sutton's Bay Public, Consumers Energy, number one. Traverse City Area Public, Tom's Food Market, number one. Tab eight shows the tax... Tab eight shows the taxable value for Lelandau County since Proposal A passed in 1994, and taxable value is a new term after Proposal A. We didn't used to have that, it was assessed. Tab nine shows the 2019 revenue sources by property classification, real. Residential is the largest real class in the county at ninety-one point three-three percent of the real class. That keeps growing. Tab ten shows the 2019 revenue source by property classification for personal property. Here, utility personal is the largest class at sixty-five point eight-six percent of the value of the personal class. Tab eleven puts the two classes together, real and personal, and residential is still the largest at eighty-nine point thirty percent of the value. Tab twelve is a map of the top ten owners by taxable value. It shows where they are located in the county, and of course, a couple of them can't be mapped because they're personal property, and that's DTE Energy and Cherry Land Rural Electric. Thirteen is the tab I put in always for the exempt class. Approximately, it's actually a little bigger than that, I think, but approximately twenty-seven percent of the land in Lelandau County is off the tax roll and exempt.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah, over twenty-seven percent. But the reason it's becoming more and more important is the law in Michigan that everything is taxable unless it's specifically exempted. And one of the things that the state is asking local units to do, and I think it's an excellent idea, and they're going to be asking it in their AMAR reviews, is that do they have some sort of policy to grant an exemption? In other words, are they asking some questions? And that's in that audit of minimum assessing requirements that will, that they have some sort of written procedures in place for the exemptions that they do, that they do grant. I've also, and that's a circled part on that AMAR, that they'd actually ask the local unit when they go out to visit them. I always put in here the requests that I get from the state, and that request is that we value or give them an idea of the value of our exempt property in the county. And I think I told you before, we attempt to make some sort of a good estimate on that. I send out requests on those exemptions, trying to at least get insurance value, and obviously, in our county-owned lands, there's a report that the county has where you're valuing your assets, so I try to get that and update it every year. To be honest, though, my estimate is going to be extremely low because you really need to go out and do an appraisal on everything, and we've not been able to do that. But even at that, we're up in fairly big numbers, just with what we're able to gather at nine-hundred-and-fifty-three, seven-fourty-seven, three-oh-two, which is the last page in the exempt report, if you take a look at it. As we continue to work on that and get more information, we're going to have higher accuracy, and I expect with higher accuracy, you're going to see that number go up. Tab fourteen is the tab which shows where Lelandau County ranks in terms of taxable value among eighty-three counties in Michigan. And this year, it's Lelandau County ranks twenty-seventh, so we're up from last year. Last year, we, in the last several years, we've been at twenty-eighth, but we've moved up to twenty-seventh this year. Tab fifteen is the official L forty-four oh-two, or the apportionment report. The page one of that report is the certification statement. Page two would be the units in the county with their taxable value and the revenue projected for those units. Page three in that report are the authorities within the county and their revenues. Page four are the schools in the county and their revenue. Page five is the intermediate school district information. Page six is the homestead, non-homestead property tax straits by unit within the county. And page seven is the qualifying special assessment knowledge that we have in the county. So once we know what happens in November, I will post this then to our county's website and submit this document to the state. Are there any other questions regarding the report?
Commissioner Redd.
Tab thirteen, the exempt parcels. The first one, you may have listed is the Telford Farm, and it says assessed W slash zero, or, oh.
We have strange things going on in some of our units where they don't put the assessment on that parcel, they put the assessment on another parcel. And so rather than putting a value on that because of it being exempt, it really is being picked up someplace else. It shouldn't be done that way, but we do have some units that... Sometimes I understand why they do that. You have parcels conceivably that, when they're purchasing their property, you have a house maybe in two townships. It might straddle the line, and I don't know how they make their decision on where they're picking the can, but... So that's the reason you see the top. It is being taxed, it's just being picked up on another parcel. That's why I put it with others.
With others, okay, that's what it is.
Any other questions?
Well, one quickly then, these are all exempt properties?
Yes.
How many, twenty-some pages of exempt?
We have a lot of exempt property in the county.
Some of it's taxable.
Well, that's a misprint from the program, because it shouldn't say that, but...
These are all exempt, this whole section?
And the reason I put it in here is I think you need to be aware of how many exemptions we really have in the county.
Yes.
So are all the properties in the Grand Travers ban exempt?
Yes.
If they're in it, so follow the law.
And that grows every year, too, and frankly, I don't understand how that process works. I wish I did more, but...
So they purchased some properties, they're in township, then the ban did. That was a former PDM.
Well, I know, if you looked at last year, I know they have more parcels this year that are exempt than last year, so obviously, they've...
So those become exempt once they purchase them by the ban?
And I'm going to assume that they must be considered in trust?
There's a process, I don't want to detail, but you have to petition the state of Michigan. They have to petition, put it inside their boundaries, and there has to be a public hearing, and the public has a chance to input. The units of government have opportunity to input that, and then a decision is made.
I'm not sure it's always done, all this, my points.
As I understand, that's a process. They have to petition, they have to put it inside the boundaries.
See, the two percent funding is supposed to cover that, those taxes that are on that Grand Travers ban?
Right.
That's what the purpose is.
Who makes the determination whether the process was followed or not? You know, who makes the determination whether it's exempt or not? That's my first question.
Well, the township does, which is why it's really critical that they have a policy.
So do we know whether...
We do.
They are following the process?
I don't even know if they have a policy, to be honest. I know that, that they, I will know, because that's the question that's going to be asked in this AMAR, so I will know, but I don't know yet because they haven't had the AMAR.
Because I understood that process as well, that they actually had to petition to add it to the reservation in order for it to be tax exempt.
Which is different than other property, yes.
That's fine, that's fine. But, you know, hopefully, the township is saying, yes, that process was followed before they grant the tax exemption.
And if it's in, if they had a good policy, that would be part of the process, is just to go through the policy, just to make sure that it was...
So are we going to get an answer to that question?
We will, but they haven't had the AMAR yet. And I will let you know once they have asked the question.
Yes, what are all the, Lelandau County, on the dock side? Where are all the dock side?
What page?
Well, it's exempt, so tab thirteen, but dock side... Are those some, are those parcels up on the hill that we had take over, Nut Frigid Food?
It's Bayview.
Bayview.
It's those fake parcels?
Yes, yes, all the fake parcels. Okay, thank you. Thank you, all right.
And if you look through here, the reason for my first, or my second column, not the parcel numbers, but the reason I have them sorted this way, if you go back to that report that I have to report to the state, I have to sort them that way to value and to put them in the report, which is why you're seeing them sorted by what they are, whether it's a township, or whether it's a school, or... And sometimes, frankly, I have to get some help to make sure, you know, when it isn't readily apparent which category goes in, I have to find out what might be going on.
Any other questions?
What, I'm sorry. Last, tab fourteen, you've got the county, and you've got Lelandau County, number twenty-seven. What is the, what is this report?
It's statewide taxable value ranking of all eighty-three counties.
But what is the four-point-five-five?
That's the percent of increase between last year's taxable and this year's?
Okay, just a percent of increase, so we went up that much even with Proposal A and all of that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Redd.
I move to approve the county apportionment report, L forty-four oh-two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you for understanding.
All right, so then that brings us to the Benzy-Lelandau District Health Digitization Software. Commissioner Lo.
I would... I would move to approve $25,000 for the purpose of digitization of the Benzy-Lelandau Health Department records.
For Lelandau County.
For Lelandau County.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Now we go to Park and Rec Commission, approval for public hearing for public input, the five-year plan. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to set up public hearing days for public input on the final draft with the twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-four Lelandau County five-year parks and recreation greenways and open space plan for Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, at nine-thirty a.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That brings us then to the county clerk, the release of the attorney-client privilege letter. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to waive the attorney-client privilege and release the attorney-client privilege letter of nine, twenty nineteen, regarding the county credit card issue. It's part of the FOIA request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We have the non-union uniform gun allowance report?
I'm leaning on Commissioner Redd, I'll tell you.
Yes. I move to approve the uniform and gun allowance for the non-union personnel through payroll with appropriate taxes as presented.
Support.
I could have done that.
Any questions about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, then that brings us to the administration, Solutions for You, contract renewal. Commissioner Redd.
I move to waive the board policy on bid requirements and renew an agreement between Lelandau County and Solutions for You LLC, pending council review and approval. Second.
And that has occurred.
Pardon me?
That has occurred.
It has occurred. Well, then we can take that part out of pending council approval.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
So this is contract for cleaning the courthouse?
Yes, yeah, they drew up the contracts. I'll move counsel there. So one-point-five percentage?
I guess we'd know, if we look up, I mean, two years down the road, we're like, what Solutions for You? I suppose it would come up as a cleaning, okay.
So, so is it the jail as well?
Yes, yeah.
It's not just the court, that's what I thought. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, now we have review of financials. I did get an email, we read it on Joe's thing. All right, seeing none, then do we have any committee reports, recommendations, or resolutions? Commissioner Wessel. No. I'm sorry. Okay, then, so then we'll go to the special reports by staff commissioners.
We had a Northern Lakes Committee on Mental Health meeting this week, and I was asked to remind commissioners to complete the survey for our November meeting.
I've already done it. Okay, so then, are there any other commissioners? No. This is for public input, public comment, please. Please come forward. Thank you for waiting so long.
Good evening again. On the issue of the road closure, simplified, it would seem to me that there is a responsible party for the event, and I don't know who that is. But it would seem that, since there was a meeting, that that responsible party or the responsible entity would be, after gathering all the information, would prepare a simplified, very simple report that indicated the issues, and the, and what kind of problem they caused, and what the resolution of the issue would be, that would be requested by this commission of that entity, or that party, so that it would be much easier for you to make a decision based on those answers, or if those answers or that report is inconsistent with the individual experiences and interviews that you commiserated had, then you request a change. But it would seem, it could be quite easily simplified with that one, so I'll suggest it might be a very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Wessel.
I had the opportunity to go to the Indigenous Peoples' Day ceremony, and as they were introducing the program, it was my pleasure to be able to say that the resolution in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day was approved on a seven-zero vote, and they were appreciative.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then we'll move on to approval of financials. Commissioner Lo.
I move to approve amendment numbers nineteen dash zero-one-two and nineteen dash zero-one-three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Move to approve fund transfer nineteen dash zero-zero-five.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I've moved to, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Move to approve claims and accounts, one million, one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Move to approve post-audit accounts in the amount of three million, five hundred twenty-one thousand, thirty-seven dollars, twenty-nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.